Welcome to this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for live streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by Departments of the County, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administration Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Dave Dotterer, Rick Dyer, and Colleen Roberts, working for you.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you all for being here this morning. It is 9:30, so we'll call the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for February 7, 2024, to order. Of course, we're live here in the courthouse auditorium and on audio/video conference via Zoom. And we'll start today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would please stand and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a special presentation today of the Employee of the Month of Robert Bartolini from the Assessors' Office. Come on up, Robert. Dave, I'm sure you'll want to be up here with him. Well, as I said, we are celebrating the Employee of the Month for February 2024. And this month, it's Robert Bartolini from the Assessors' Office, presented this day, February 7, 2024. Robert Bartolini began working for Jackson County in May, in March, excuse me, of 2014 as a Property Appraiser I in the Assessors' Office, where he brought his considerable experience in mortgage lending to his position. In March 2015, he transitioned to his current position as Property Appraiser II. Over the years, the Assessors' Office has seen substantial changes in laws and procedures that have affected his work, such as major losses of property from the Alameda and South Open Chain fires and the COVID pandemic. Extremely limited the office's ability to meet directly with taxpayers. Through all of these hurdles, Robert was able to maintain his focus and continue to meet the high appraisal standards. He is recognized as often having helpful suggestions to increase the communication between all levels of staff and among teams working within the office. Acknowledges that his work is complex and must meet a high level of detail and documentation. He's a team player and a natural leader with an abundance of experience that he freely shares with his enthusiasm, wit, and humor. You know, anytime it says that, I ask somebody to tell a joke. This, we need to test that wit and humor. All right, perfect. Robert, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on being selected as the February Employee of the Month, and thank you for your outstanding dedication to the citizens of Jackson County. Yes, and in addition to a joke, I'd like you to tell us a story about the best citizen that ever came in with a great line about their taxes. Can you do that? Oh, was it? I've never had a complaint. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Thank you. That's a great line. But anyways, that's absolutely right. You know, everything you've got there is right on the mark because it is very, very complex, and so thank you for everything you do. I know your job is not easy, so thanks.
Well, thank you, Robert. You do have a sense of humor. And for, gosh, nearly 10 years of being with the county is awesome, and that experience is so valuable. And to be a standout as Employee of the Month in an organization as big as Jackson County is remarkable. And so, congratulations, and thank you for the great job you do for our citizens and for the county. So, thank you, and congratulations. Anyway, and you get the final word. Oh, Dave gets to speak first. You don't get the final word, then we get to hear your other jokes.
I want to say that you definitely are... This award is yours. I'm glad you got it. They picked the right guy. You've been a good, a steady worker, a good worker, a great friend. I know we're going to miss you. And all of our meetings, you brought a wealth of knowledge and experience and insights into our work and how we should go about doing it. You've kept the meetings lively with your sense of humor. It's just been, it's been a joy to have, having you in the office, and you're definitely going to be missed. And I know many times I've spotted you at the counter, visiting with taxpayers, and wasn't actually trying to eavesdrop, you know, walking through there, can hear what's going on. And I always, I always thought that that guy is, he really can dialogue with the taxpayer, make them understand what's happening, and settle them down if they need to settle them down, and then, and just have fun with them if they're in there to have fun. And I know you're a role model when it comes to customer service in our office, and you've been there long enough to know we have a lot of new people coming, come in, and they don't need, they don't know how the offices, how the office functions, and their knowledge isn't, is just at the beginning stages. And you've helped a number of new staff members get up to speed. That's an asset, a resource that we're going to lose, and we know that. But anyway, I wish you the best going forward, and thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm glad to have been nominated for this, and here I thought it just was because of Coffee Club that I... I want to thank Dave, Angela, Melissa, and Susan, the management team in the Assessors' Office, for providing an environment that is conducive to working, and I appreciate it. It consists of some of the characteristics are cooperation, self-reliance, and it helps to make a wonderful working environment. I especially want to thank Angela Stewart for volunteering to be my supervisor when I first started here. Not sure she thought she knew what she was getting into, and she may not make the same choice again, but she was my direct contact to learn my job. She became a mentor of mine and helped me put me on a path for both professional and personal growth, for which I will always be thankful. And she demonstrates daily. She's one of the smartest people I know. I would also like to acknowledge the Department VIP, Michelle Ratty. She is always commenting and has these words of affirmation to sarcastic comments I might make during the day. One of my favorites is, "I don't think I was talking to you, Bartolini." And then, my current favorite is doubtful when I tell her she's going to miss me when I retire. I want to thank the entire office. They really enjoy the work they do. They're dedicated. They're very diligent in what they do, and they're accepting of my sense of humor, which I appreciate. Mostly, I want to thank my wife of 43 years, Karen, who is definitely the smartest person I know. Thank you.
All right, we'll let the room clear out just a little before we get on. Okay, we will move on now into our request for a discussion of non-agenda items. We do have a five-minute limit. In pursuant to the codified ordinance of Jackson County, Section 213.06, members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. However, pursuant to ORS 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raise by asking staff to follow up on any questions or by placing the matter on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting. We do have three people in the auditorium signed up today. The first one is Teresa Sheehan. And please give your name and address before speaking.
I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come here and talk. My name is Teresa Sheehan. I live in Gold Hill, 13416, Highway 234. I have two issues, and I would try to keep them brief. I volunteer at a rescue ranch for horses, dogs, cats. We do everything there. And I made a call to the Animal Control in Jackson County and reported a man that is neglecting his dogs. He's had four dogs and a cat, and they're all dead except one now because they're not being fed. And I called Animal Control, and I explained to them what I knew about what was going on. And it was not a good conversation with Michael Dunn, and I'm not here to put down Michael Dunn, and I'm not here to get his job. I really don't want to make trouble for him, but I need someone to help these dogs. There's only one left. And the day I called, there was a dead dog in the kennel that was starved to death. And he called me the next day, Monday, said he couldn't get out there Sunday, but that there were no dead dogs in the kennel and that the dog that was there looked healthy. And if I may approach you, I would like to show you...
If you could, can you give them to our recording secretary?
I was not treated nicely on the phone. I was accused of a few things, and all I heard was, "Poor Gary, he's the owner of the dogs. Poor Gary, he's down on his luck. What have I got against people who are down on their luck?" My job is to call and report neglect or abuse, and his job is to go from there. And I, and he kept saying, "Well, what do you want me to do about it?" And I'm like, "No, no, 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 no." And I did call him and tell him that I would be coming here to address this with you today, and because I don't want to go behind his back. If he has something to say, I want him to come and say it to you. I don't know if he's here or not because I've never met him. I only talked to him on the phone. The only thing I could get him to do was a follow-up in one month. Well, neither one of those, the black and white dog is dead, and the other dog is not going to last a month. I believe there's mental illness involved with this man that has the dogs. He does not need to have animals at all. Four dogs and a cat, and he has mental issues, in my opinion. I'm a registered nurse. I think, I think that may be all I want to say. I'm just not getting any response from Animal Control. I know they took the horses away from Animal Control, and I understand why because I reported a horse 10 years ago, and I've only ever called Animal Control twice. And I got the same thing, "Well, what do you want us to do about it, Teresa?" And I'm like, "Your job." My other issue, and when, I live out in the country, and people drop off animals out in the country, especially cats. I am now the proud owner of 10 feral cats. Because they drop off the cats, they may or may not be pregnant. There is nobody in town that wants to do spay and neuter on feral animals now. And snip is like four months out on trying to get the cat spayed and neutered. There is a rescue up in Sam's Valley also that said that he'll take them down to Wyreka, and it'll cost me $75 per cat. But the vets in town that were doing it, and they con...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up real quick.
I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
The vets in town that were doing it, I don't know why they won't do feral cats anymore, maybe because they're just hard, but they want $400 to $500 to spay or neuter a cat. So, it's an issue for people that live out in the country. We don't know what to do with all these cats that people are, that just show up on our property, and I'm not a cat woman. I don't, I'm not a cat person either. So, thank you very much for listening to me.
Is it possible that maybe Pete or Joel? At this point, wouldn't this become a law enforcement issue?
So, I think after, so I have been in contact. I think after we have public comment, I can address some of the concerns that are brought up during the comment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, next on our list is Sherman Simmons. Up, Sherman.
Yes, in reference to what Teresa said, this gentleman is a neighbor of mine. I called her for her advice too and talked to her in the past. I have some pictures too of what occurred with those dogs. I was not happy with the Animal Control people. When I talked to the gentleman, Mike, he was rude, and I'm very frustrated with it. I would like to make sure these guys are getting the kind of education they need, and like I told him, you know, you just apparently don't know who you're talking to. I'm an educated person, you won't talk to me that way. And I'll be talked to and spoken to with respect that I've earned. And so, in any case, I want them to follow up when they're phoned and told about a situation. I want them to get their job done. This gentleman that had the animals, I arranged for him to get food from a restaurant, a triple tree, et cetera, to try to get those animals fed. I dropped food by for him and told him to get those dogs fed before. So, anyway, he had been told explicitly. Here's some other pictures of this situation.
You go ahead and give them to the secretary, we'll get those. Thank you.
And by the way, when the guy drove back to the animals, I have several animals there, and my animals are well cared for, and he should have seen that. In fact, I have three geese, I had four, I've got three left, and some chickens, and my dog's fat and healthy. And this guy being a neighbor, you know, when I see that kind of care, I come off the wall. By the way, one of the geese, I called a deputy because Dennis Smith, you know him well, he and I went out and caught that goose many years ago. And so, it's CW Smith Deputy is one of my geese, but my animals are well cared for, and I expect other people to do the same. So, anyway, that's one of my issues. I want us to get on this drug situation in Medford. I'm sick about it. I drive through West Medford. I called Bill Meyer Show the other day and talked with Bill briefly about it, and Bill said on the air, "I don't drive to West Medford unless I have to." We have to address it. Portland's got, you know what they're doing up there, the emergency. I don't know if they'll accomplish anything, but we have a real problem in this valley, allowing this, these drugs to flood into our area. We've got to take a stand and clean this up. As a high school teacher, I'm a CTE business teacher. I've had 30,000 students between college and high school, et cetera, in my career, and I am appalled that we're allowing this to go on. We've got to take a stand and save our communities. Okay, thank you. Let's do our job, and all of us have to follow up. Okay? We're losing a generation with this stuff. Let's do it. All right, hospitals. I had to take a friend to the emergency room at Rogue Valley the other day. We sat there for four hours. She was laying on the concrete floor in that emergency room. It's appalling. That's not an emergency room. When I was an EMT fireman at Fire District 3, we had emergency rooms, and people actually got in to see someone. But now, look what we have. It's chaotic. Providence too, I'm hearing stories. Let's address the issue. That's not an emergency situation the way it's being run. We need competent people to follow up, get people in there, and get them in there fast. Got to take measures. I don't know what it's going to take, but let's do something there. Anyway, those are my topics, and I'd appreciate your help. I do appreciate your time. At least, we don't have input at the state level, unfortunately, or the national level, but thanks to you folks, we have a chance to come in and express ourselves and bring our concerns to you. They may be state and national issues, but we get to talk about it here. And hopefully, it has ramifications, and we'll shake some people up and get some things done. I don't care if it's Jeff Golden or anybody else. Jeff was an old friend of mine in the talk radio business, but we got, we have things we have to address. And this drug problem was one he brought up, by the way, at his meeting in Ashland. I've called him several times, and I want to have input into that. And so, let's all get on board and do some things, something about these issues.
Thank you, Sherman.
Thank you.
I appreciate that we appreciate what he's saying. We do have a rule against any sort of applause or comments, but I appreciate the fact that you also appreciate what he's saying. We will move on. Next person on our list is Laura Ahern.
Laura Ahern, 8595 Upper Applegate Road. I would like to thank the two prior speakers for their citizen involvement and showing that our community cares about our animals. Last week, Mr. Dyer, you stated that I could call each of you commissioners. That's a two-way street. I thought you might want to follow up about feral cats and rabies, or the dog, the puppy deaths. But guess what? I did it. I called Mr. Dotter, and he was kind enough to return my call. We had a spirited but respectful discussion. Of course, you wouldn't know about that because Mr. Dotter can't speak to the other two commissioners or go through a surrogate like Mr. Benton without violating the public meetings law. So, I'm here to get everyone on the same page. As I understand the outcome of my conversation with Mr. Dotter, he's looking into questions that he couldn't answer, like, "How much did that ORW conceptual design cost that says we currently need space for 54 cats at the shelter?" And also to address how a citizen can have meaningful involvement. I look forward to continuing the discussion. Mr. Dotter explained that policymaking for the animal shelter is extensively delegated to administration, but ultimately, the buck stops here, right? Based on personal experience, I have recommendations to address the county's appalling rate of puppy mortality. The 15-plus percent death rate last year was not a one-time aberration. In 2020, only one puppy died of natural causes. For the past three years, from 11% to over 15% of puppies have been put down or died. I think administration has not been keeping you adequately informed or implementing the right solutions. There are two more matters of substance raised at the Advisory Committee meeting, which I wanted to tell you about. At the end of my time last week, I was explaining, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I meant to show that, hopefully that it can be seen on Zoom. This is a graph of the puppy mortality rate at the county shelter. Okay, yeah, back to the cats. I was explaining the county's legal and moral responsibilities to be a leading participant in projects to manage unvaccinated feral cats, which according to local vets, I've talked with three of them now, are more likely to interact with rabid wildlife than our dogs. For example, trap, neuter, vaccinate, release, as is done in Josephine County, their statistics are very easy to find on their website. It appears that Jackson County now has a singular distinction, the only county shelter in Oregon that does not accept cats from its citizens. Last year, I appeared at a board meeting and before the Budget Committee urging you to start taking meaningful steps to replace the Wolf Hole Shelter. I was only half-right. The county needs a new shelter, but I'm wrong if I suggested that the county should run it. The past few years, and objective evidence prove that this is not working. So, at the January 22 Advisory Committee meeting, I suggested that the committee take up the policy question of whether Jackson County should at least consider and be informed by the examples set in Douglas and Klamath Counties, where law enforcement handles dog control and nonprofits handle sheltering under contract. Why might you want to look at these adjoining counties as well as Deschutes and Nevada Humane Society? They have expansive, modern facilities, 20,000 square feet in Klamath. They are true animal shelters. Ours has been reduced to a dog detention compound. They have the broad support of their communities and capitalize on free resources and labor of their volunteers. I've learned that this was brought to the attention of the Board in the 2017 Audit of Animal Services. Some headline recommendations, I'm quoting, "Outsourcing shelter services is an option. Based on Deschutes' contract terms, the county would have saved approximately $200,000 if services had been outsourced. Expanded use of volunteers could reduce personnel costs. Look at programs used elsewhere to increase the live release rate of cats, such as trap, neuter, vaccinate, release." I'll also leave with you, shelter populations, as they compare against that conceptual design, and the feline intakes to our shelter. It's just dropped off to, well, nothing from the community any longer. These are big policy questions. I believe it's the duty of this Board to set the governing policy for Jackson County through open proceedings and with public input. There's a few, bit more here in my written statements, which I would, I offer to you as a recommendation on how we go forward, so hopefully, the clerk can pass this line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that does cover the list that we had here. Anyone else not signed up? Come on up, please, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Kent Knox. I live at 2583 East Evans Creek Road in Rogue River. And what prompted me to come here was there was a meeting of staff, I believe, on January 11th of the county commissioners. And in that, in that meeting, there was discussion, apparently, of some conflicts with the public meeting law. There were two of them. One was the AOC, the Association of Oregon Counties, and another was a local political party meeting. And I didn't come here to complain about that. I came here to present a solution, and there's a copy for each of you of this. The first page is the first page of the Board of Commissioners' website in Marion County. The first page is the first page of the Board of Commissioners' website in Marion County. And the second page is also a link that connects to that page. The first line in the Board of Commissioners is a list of meetings that would be attended by two or more of the Marion County Commissioners. And it looks like that is to prevent the conflict where more than two people show up, or, or two people show up, because I believe they also have three county commissioners. So that would prevent mistaken attendance of two or more county commissioners at a meeting, where, surprise, we're here. And I think that their list of meetings doesn't tell which commissioners, and I think that's a good idea. You don't want to tell which commissioners are going to be at which meetings in, in this environment. I think that, I think it's good enough to just say which meetings will have a quorum of the commissioners. And the way that this works, I assume, is that each commissioner must pre-notify the IT department or somebody of which meetings they're going to attend, so there's probably a spreadsheet or something that's behind this. And that seems to be a relatively simple thing, and it's already on the Marion County website, so it should be possible to copy it onto the Jackson County website. And that, I believe, would be a solution to these inadvertent quorums that occur at local meetings. And since I've got over a minute left, this is didactic, but I'll do it anyway, I guess. There was some discussion about the way the AOC, again, Association of American, of, of Oregon Counties, was conducting their votes. And there was unhappiness amongst the commissioners about how they counted them. And the reason that that struck me is I noticed that the Shasta County Clerk resigned earlier this week because she was having conflicts about how votes were counted. So I would like to say that the usual way that votes are counted is you first have to figure out how many votes there are, and then you have to look at the rules, and I think the rules in the AOC was two-thirds of the votes had to be yea or nay in order for the issue to be decided. And what happened was eight people in the AOC abstained, and the total number of votes was 44. The no votes, I think, were 27. That's 61%, so the issue was undecided. I believe that's correct. I think that's normal. Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the auditorium? Come on up.
My name is Logan Vaughn. I live at 1116 Murray Street, West Medford, over in the part that Bill Meyer will just drive through, as they say. Fortunately for me, my street is cleaned up. I've cleaned up. I've, I've been there about seven years. Evil prevails because good men do nothing. The bottom line is I, my new, my new friend here, Sherman Simmons, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just want to get up and reiterate. I don't know if you saw it, but when he was speaking, there was thousands of men and women standing behind him. We, the people, have had enough. We need to take our country back, and it starts with this county. And the bottom line is my, our Creator is raising an army of men and women that are willing to do that. And if you guys aren't on board, I would ask that each of you seek it inside your hearts and resign. What is coming is beyond me, and it can't be stopped. No weapon formed by the enemy will prosper, and what is coming to this valley is bigger than us. I encourage you to get on board, and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the auditorium? Anybody online have their Zoom hand up?
Mr. Chair, at this time, no one has their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
If you'd like, if you'd like.
Please, yes.
So I'm gonna make some general statements as it relates to Ms. Sheehan's comments. Is first, so if someone makes a complaint to us, the county then has the obligation or responsibility to investigate, but that doesn't necessarily give us the authority to tell the person who made the complaint what's going on. We still have to respect the actual person who's being complained against privacy, and so I, I can't speak as to how the code enforcement officer spoke to her or Mr. Simmons, and we'll look into that. But as it relates to just getting updates on the course of your complaint, that's not something the county can really do or has the authority to do, because we do have to respect the priv, one, we have to respect the privacy of the person who we're investigating, because when the county's investigating, it's where they are complaining, and we have to respect the privacy and the rights of the person we're investigating. And then, two, not every, if it's an ongoing investigation, we don't make any disclosure of what's going on, because we don't want to impede the course of that investigation. But I mean, in this particular case, my understanding is both law enforcement and animal control has been out to this facility, or this, this home, Mr., the owner's home, and done an investigation. They haven't found any evidence of neglect. Just because someone may or may not have a mental illness doesn't prohibit them from owning a pet. Just because someone may or may not treat their pet the same way that you would treat your pet doesn't necessarily rise to the legal level of neglect. So both animal control and law enforcement has been out there and haven't found evidence, and that's really what our job is, that we need to find evidence to support a violation or that there's a criminal conduct having occurred. And my understanding is that in this case, so far, we haven't found that evidence to support that. So that's sort of, so in this case, it wasn't necessarily an ongoing investigation that forehanded a disclosure, but that, there, there hasn't been any evidence, and my understanding is that Ms. Sheehan and Mr. Simmons may disagree with that conclusion, but, but we can really only investigate and make terminations based upon the facts and evidence that we find as it relates to that. Turning to, I guess, the public meetings law. The public meetings law is a fairly complex body of law, and I know that it came up that, you know, two members of the commissioners can't go to AOC because we're not members of AOC, but really, the public meeting law only applies to, to either decisions made by the Board of Commissioners or deliberations towards the decision made by the Board of Commissioners. So if, if two commissioners are going to a meeting of a regional political party or a Christmas party or anything like that, the public meetings law doesn't apply unless there's gonna be something discussed about the decision the board can make, or the board makes a decision there. So that, that's why it's not prohibited from two members of the commissioners being at anything unless there's actually a decision before the board. Not, not that it's something that the county may have interest in, or that the board has interest in. It's really tied to, is there a decision for the Board of Commissioners to make that's going to be discussed or made at that meeting? So that's where the public meetings law clicks in. When it comes to Marion County, I don't know, I'm not their lawyer, not their administrator, so I don't know why they do what they do, but we do publish when two of our members, we put on our notice of meetings when two of our members maybe gather at something that the county may have interest. We don't always know what may be of interest, but really, the requirement is, we do that as above and beyond the public meetings law when it comes to noticing where the commissioners are going to be, if we know in advance. But that doesn't solve the public meetings law requirement, so just putting notice that two commissioners may be at a thing doesn't solve them public meetings, because if it is a meeting, it has to be controlled by the board, there has to be minutes taken, there's a whole, we have to make sure that it has ADA accommodations available. So that's why there may be some misnomer in posting that two members of the Marion County Commission may be somewhere, may give the appearance that it's a meeting of the commissioners, and if they're not keeping minutes and providing ADA accommodations and posting notice 24 hours in advance of the agenda, they're missing all of those things that you need to do if it is a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So I just wanted to address some of those things that came up.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add, we, we are very diligent about making sure we attend meetings properly and in accordance with public meeting laws. That's something that we are very attentive to. Okay. We'll move on then into the consent calendar, which this week consists of the minutes of meetings. The Board of Commissioners' work session for January 16th, 2024, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of January 17th, 2024, Board of Commissioners' staff meeting of January 20, or, excuse me, 18th, 2024. And I will move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Commissioner Daughter?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. No public hearings today, so move on into discussion and deliberation items. First item there is an order adopting the 2024 Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is Order Number 26-24. And Mr. Benton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an order adopting the 2024 Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Jackson County recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people, property, infrastructure within the community, and undertaking hazard mitigation actions will reduce the potential for harm from future hazard occurrences. An adoption National Hazard Mitigation Plan is required as a condition for future funding of mitigation projects under multiple FEMA pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs and other grant opportunities such as the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Jackson County last adopted a National Hazard Mitigation Plan in 2018 and has fully participated in the FEMA prescribed mitigation planning process to prepare the update to the 2024 Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Natural hazards mitigation plan is composed of three volumes. Volume one is the basic plan, volume two is the appendices, and volume three is the jurisdictional agenda. It's all collectively referred to as the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and is in an ongoing cycle of development and revision to improve its effectiveness. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners received an overview of the natural, of the proposed natural hazard mitigation plan presented today from the emergency manager at its work session on January 30th, 2024. The Oregon Department of Emergency Management and FEMA Region 10 officials have reviewed the Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and pre-approved it on January 9th, 2024, contingent upon its official adoption of the participating agencies and governments and entities, which include the county, Ashland, the cities of Ashland, Butte Falls, Central Point, Eagle Point, Gold Hill, Jacksonville, Phoenix, Rogue River, Shady Cove, and Talent, as well as several special districts, including the Jackson County Fire District Number Three, Jackson County Fire District Number Five, and the Medford Water Commission. That ends the report. I would like to say it came up in the, in the review at the work session, but when we adopt this plan, that doesn't mean that it can't be subsequently amended over the course of the next five years, so it's still an ongoing operating plan that we can look at and adjust to as things occur.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
No. So for discussion, I will move to approve Order Number 26-24.
I will second.
Good. Move discussion.
Yes, and I just would like to mention the great work our emergency managers has done to coordinate all of our communities, cities, districts, and commissions to make this such a great coordinated, complete document. But two, also, the, the new, it's not our emergency operation plan, to make that distinction. It's just hazard, hazard identification mitigation plan, I guess. And the new added one is the air quality, which I'd just like to point out, smoke is a part of that, and the attention our board has given to smoke impacts in summer from our wildfire, and the coordination we've done with our federal agencies to put the fires out, you know, through our smoke, initial attack and full suppression, has been so successful. And I just think that's a big part of it, and it's in our community wildfire protection plan, which is in the plan, in the mitigation plan. So it's a good document, and, and I think the work to include all of our cities is so important.
And I just want to add also, great job on that, because I know it's difficult enough when you have to work with a federal agency, a state agency, and a university, not to mention all the jurisdictions and the special districts and everything to put this together. And this is really a very critical document. It isn't just about funding. This is, in fact, the basis upon which your, all of your emergency operations are planned. It's your threat assessment for all intents and purposes, and you need to get this right before you go forward with your, with your, with your planning. So again, great job, and I appreciate all the work that was done.
I will just reiterate, and Holly Powers is here. I want to say thank you to you and your entire, the entire Emergency Management Department, again, to repeat, just a meticulously crafted, comprehensive.
Department of two.
That's still a lot of work for the entire department. Even if it's only two, it's only two.
A powerful dorm of two.
That's right.
I want to add something, too. I think a lot of the cities felt the frustration as, as we did. This was brought to us in September with a, a long comment period time, and I know I put a lot of comments into Holly, as did the cities, because we felt a lot of frustration. This was done from the University of Oregon with not a lot of local flavor, and those comments were taken. And I know it is like Mr. Benton said, it's still a living document, so can be amended, and I think that's great. So I know our cities felt that, too, and our comments were heard, so.
Absolutely. We'll always adapt to any sort of changing circumstances, situations, and, and again, great job. Thank you. And we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daughter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to the second item on discussion deliberation is an order authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, Number 043-24, between the State of Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and Jackson County, and this is Order Number 27-24. Mr. Benton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The State of Oregon Department of Environmental Quality has been collaborating with Jackson County for more than a decade by providing funding to help support the air quality coordinator position in our Health and Human Services Department. The coordinator is responsible for carrying out administrative and code enforcement tasks under the codified ordinance of Jackson County and participating in the development implementation of pollution prevention activities, and by assisting in air quality coordination activities with local agencies and groups. The term of this agreement is October 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2025, and it does require ratification to be effective October 1st, 2023. The fiscal impact is $30,000 and not to exceed revenue for the term of the agreement. So the board is aware that's not the total cost of the position, but that is the state contribution towards that position. Thank you.
Any questions?
And I will move approval of Order Number 27-24.
I'll second.
Commissioner Daughter?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Next item is an order authorizing a Jackson County Services contract with Ashley Taylor LLC, and this is Order Number 28-24.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first of two today, and we're gonna see some more coming on a future agenda. Ashley Taylor LLC provides court-appointed guardianship services for vulnerable clients, clients who otherwise would have no legal or long-term planning assistance. There continues to be an increasing need for additional appointed guardians who can make critical decisions on behalf of clients who cannot speak for themselves. Funds are passed through to the Jackson County Mental Health Program from the Oregon Health Authorities to support the service. The term of this contract is January 1st, 2024, through June, through June 30th, 2025, and requires ratification and become effective January 1st, 2024. The financial impact is a not-to-exceed $45,000 expense for the term of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Second motion?
I'll move to approve Order Number 28-24.
Second.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daughter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Last item on the agenda today is an order authorizing a Jackson County Services contract with Guardian for Change LLC, and this is Order Number 29-24.
It's gonna sound a lot like the last one. Guardian for Change LLC provides court-appointed guardianship services for vulnerable clients who are otherwise, otherwise would have no legal or long-term planning assistance. There continues to be an increasing need for additional appointed guardians who can make critical decisions on behalf of their clients who cannot speak for themselves. Funds are passed through the Jackson County Mental Health Program from the Oregon Health Authorities to support the service. The term of this contract is also January 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, and thus requires ratification to be effective January 1st, 2024. It is a not-to-exceed $45,000 expense amount for the term of the contract.
All right.
I will move approval of Order Number 29-24.
I'll second.
Commissioner Daughter?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. And that does conclude our business today, so we are adjourned.
We hope that you have enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other recent meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RVTV Live Streaming. under Recorded Meetings, click on RVTV Live Streaming.